Okay, let's call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October 31st, 2017. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no retreat and injustice for all.
I was gonna ask Lynn if she had any minutes from reports received and filed. Okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
American Motors got their annual dinner Wednesday. I'm not going. Yeah, things going. Y'all got invites for that, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to go.
Thursday morning, Colk County Communities. Chamber, Colk County Extension, Wednesday or Thursday evening. East Affairs Association Friday morning. Mauser's 52nd birthday Sunday. I wasn't gonna say that, I just had that penciled in, I'm sorry. It slipped. Alright.
But she ages like fine wine. Better with age.
Better with age?
Oh, this is gonna be, this is gonna be a good-
I'm gonna start putting bricks on her.
You don't get anything to throw. Alright, that's all.
That's enough.
Enough being moderate.
Yeah, I don't know. Go ahead, Sam.
You didn't say what you're doing Sunday.
I'm not even talking about it, 'cause I only know when I'm not gonna be home, 'cause my house is gonna be beat or something.
We got Toys for Tots, banned out from all today till 10:00 PM. Thursday, besides the community, the United Way finale's at 7:45. Friday and Saturday's the downtown open house. Sunday, the Sons of the Union Veterans. We're short of a new chapter. We've got a thing at 1:30. And that is all I've got. So...
Um, there's a, did you say there was forgive me not gala on Thursday?
No, I didn't. I'm not going to that. I think Miss Brighton's actually gonna be the speaker.
Yeah. Yep, I don't have a lot.
Yeah, it is Thursday.
Yeah.
Yep. Cut. That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Presentation from staff consultants invited guest Ron Hoffman. Would you come forward? You know, you actually have 32 years of military. You beat John out. You beat John out.
Thank you for your service, sir.
I was reading this and I'm like, this is... But I'll tell you what. We just wanna thank you for your service and thank you for what you're doing with EMS.
Thank you for saying so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got to be your boy.
I'm not retiring yet, but...
Yes. No, we're just, we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then when's the Operation Google Boys trip Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday night, what time, and y'all starting?
I don't know where I'm supposed to be. It's like where my wife said to be.
Amen. I think John only had 31 years.
He beat me. He started when he was 12, though.
Doesn't feel that way.
Trying stuff there, I've done.
Okay. We have the Agri-Ready County Designation Presentation. I had received emails from Mary Keever, but this John is definitely not Mary Keever, so...
Thank you. I'm Ryan Gill with Missouri Soil Marketing Association, speaking on behalf of Missouri Markers Care Day. We just wanted to take a moment and let commissioners of Colk County know that we appreciate the designation. You all saw it in making Colk County Agri-Ready and to ensure that agriculture remains a thriving, economic, and future for the state. So with that, we just wanna do a presentation to you guys, make it a bit more formal, and encourage you to use the best of your ability. So...
I don't wanna stage this.
Dude.
That's fine.
Wanna do like, oh, man?
Sure.
Feel like I'm gonna sit down.
Yeah.
Do all the changes.
Yeah.
You bet. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Appreciate that.
We was planning on having that Wheeler kid come in again, but...
Yeah, you got it, brother.
Can't have two of us in the same room.
That's true. So, alrighty, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
You mean the Good Wheeler?
I don't know about all that.
That's your bro.
Okay, Commission comments. Bids and contracts. Signing of the Fiber Plus contract?
That's how you get to go first on the list. Is it just an award or something?
So, this is the one that you've already voted on, however, whenever Jill looked at it, it was actually a three-year plan. We only wanted a one-year. And doing a one-year, the price went up to $254 a month. So, it's still something that we need to do, but we have two. We have two documents here. One, both of them are the same, but we want two originals, one for us and one for them, so... Only you have to sign it.
Oh.
I move that we sign the Fiber Plus contract.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? New business, accounts payable review.
There's actually one at accounts payable out there that asked for approval of pending review.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number Eight.
This is for $26,030. This is the surplus property in the Sheriff's Department that they're gonna use to purchase some capital.
I'm ready for it.
Need to action today.
I move that we sign the court order for Budget Adjustment Number Eight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number Nine.
This is for $171,355.16. This is the Neighborhood Improvement Project. The Parkview Metal is just making the bond money available within the budget. I do need action.
Guys, good with this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I move that we sign the court order for Budget Adjustment Number Nine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number Nine.
This is for $171,355.16. This is the Neighborhood Improvement Project. The Parkview Metal is just making the bond money available within the budget. I do need action.
Guys, good with this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I move that we sign the court order for Budget Adjustment Number Nine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number Nine.
This is for $171,355.16. This is the Neighborhood Improvement Project. The Parkview Metal is just making the bond money available within the budget. I do need action.
Guys, good with this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I move that we sign the court order for Budget Adjustment Number Nine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tell you what, I think I'm gonna move Joe, here's... I just signed one. I'm gonna move Joe up, 'cause he's gotta get out of here. So, discussion and approval of budget transfer for Public Administrator.
This is a request to add another user to the SIM system. It's $700. Basically, she uses any available computer that accesses that she has to use other IDs to get in. So, it's $700. As if I reconfigure my staff, I can put less users on.
Is this your new employee?
Mm-hmm.
So, it's better for them to have their own user ID and login?
Mm-hmm.
Use somebody else's?
Yes.
You guys got any other questions?
Why do we have seven?
Technically, there's, um...
Where did we get the extra one from?
I have the, still the staff that I inherited and I hired a full-time person, and so that's where I got the additional person.
Marilyn had left the position open for the incoming Public Administrator to fill, and Joe filled it a couple months ago.
Why didn't we have this on the, on there from the giggle number seven people?
Technically, there were five users. There's gonna be six. I think he has more part-time, actually having user IDs than we had before. Because the number of positions haven't increased, but I think he's using more of the part-timers to use this application than Marilyn has. She didn't have all-
So, we don't have more positions, or we do?
No.
We have more part-time.
Okay, so we do have more positions, or just part-time instead of full-time positions?
Is that right, Joe?
Same line, but more positions.
We have, the staff is the same. I'm just getting by. I'm actually limping by, so...
We are. What's, uh... So, where did it increase then, I guess? Why didn't we have a budget for seven?
So, when Marilyn left, she left the full-time position open, but had a part-time position instead.
Which would still be seven.
But that part-time position stayed when Joe hired in the full-time position.
So, we added the part-time position.
Yes.
Okay. Don't think that was that hard. You added a part-time position. So, we added a position. Okay. Well, that's all I was trying to get. Why don't we budget if we're gonna have seven people?
Okay, well, we just had a few questions, so we'll get that signed and get that approved. Do we need to take action here?
No, I'll just, just so you guys had answers to the transfer.
Right.
Because it will be coming out of contingents.
Okay.
Because there's really no money in his budget, so he was around.
So, how about we all budget seven next year? You gonna budget seven next year?
Well, I guess that's the question. Is that part-timer staying?
Was one of your part-timers Marilyn?
She was just briefly. She was briefly. I will have a part-time that's gonna be leaving, but again, to get to the process, to do all the annual sediments and the property tax credit forms filled out, I still need the staff to do this. But as I bring people on, they can learn it quicker. It just... The thing of it is, is I'm not in the office that much. I'm traveling. If I can't do my job, I need the part-time people coming in, pick it up, so...
Okay.
Okay, we're good. Go to work.
Is it approved, or...
Yeah.
Yeah. Go to work. Where are you off to today?
St. Elizabeth.
Yeah, we'll go back to our agenda. Social media discussion, social media guidelines draft.
All right, I'm not sure if you guys have a chance to...
Is this what you emailed to us?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I had Jill look it over. I just wanted, this is something that we had talked about a while, a while back, and our working group kind of made some suggestions, and we made a few little edits to it. And so, I just wanted to bring it to the Commission. I also wanted to get your thoughts on going ahead with a Facebook page, a county Facebook page. I think it would be good to get information out. Things like the presentations that we had this morning are great for PR for the county and let citizens know what's going on in the county. So, I think it would be a good thing for us to try and do. So, just wanted to get your idea, your input on it, and whether or not you think we should go ahead with it. Jennifer has offered to help me if we do go forward with a Facebook page for the county, help me with the moderation of it and admin.
Can we put selfies on it?
No.
I think it would be...
I just asked, Jeff.
I think that kinda stuff is, uh, is good. Kind of shows a light, a bit lightheartedness, but... I mean, I think, you know, pictures of, you know, everyday things that county employees do, and I think things like that are good for, you know, showing the citizens what we are.
Y'all have to prove anything that is posted before it actually goes public, then?
Well, what, um, that's what kind of moderators go in and, you know, check for, you know, content that needs to be taken off, but there are so, are filters on Facebook that you can filter for offensive language and things like that, which would be turned on for sure. But as far as having to approve every comment, that's not really something I don't think that most people do. They just, you know, somebody sees-
So, we're the only ones that can post on it, but other people can comment on it?
Yeah.
I was talking about the actual posts.
No. We would be the only ones that would be able to post actual things. People could comment on it, but as moderators, somebody could report an offensive comment, and then, you know, we would look at it and say, okay, this is inappropriate. There's also on here some suggested disclaimers that we can put on there, so people can look and see what we allow, what we don't allow, as far as comments go.
So, if we don't have a social media policy, how do we have all these pages already for the county?
Well, the individual departments have been kinda doing their own thing.
I'm fine with that, don't worry about it.
And they, they've been doing a really good job, and I just thought, you know, going forward, it would be a good thing to kinda have kind of some guidelines, and that's why I'm not, this isn't really saying you have to do this, you have to do that. It's more of a guideline to kinda what people-
Well, I saw that you had a lot of them that were already have pages that are with the Social Media Policy Working Group, so...
Yeah.
They've got stuff that's not gonna get in the way of how they're gonna...
And, you know, just bringing people to some awareness of, you know, backing up your Facebook page, letting people know that these are public records, these Facebook pages and Twitter feeds. People just need to be aware of that.
And then you'll have to monitor all that, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You're gonna have to get a Facebook page, Sam, so you can monitor it.
Now, if I can't have selfies, I...
I'll make you a page.
So...
Just say the word.
I don't know if this is something that you would need to, uh, policy is something you would need to approve, or...
Try it out, see if it'll work.
You know, I think, you know, the Facebook page would, like I said, would be a good thing, and, you know, will be, some of it'll be learning as we go along, but there are already a lot of good informational articles and things out there for people that have already done it, and, you know, best practices and stuff, so I think it'll be fine.
Yeah, and you've had a good working group from all over the county, so that's good.
And as far as I know, none of the other departments that have had their Facebook pages up have had any issues that I've heard about, so...
Yeah, that's great.
So, does anybody have any questions, or?
Nope.
Comments?
I'm gonna go with the Facebook page.
Yeah, I am too.
So, do we need to, uh, do we need to take action on this today, or is this just for information, and...
Well, is this something that you want, you want to implement? It's the main thing, and if it is, you know, we could put it out on the employee portal on our website, so that employees can read it, and so they'll know what appropriate, what's appropriate. For example, not using colkcounty.org, their Colk County email address for their personal Facebook posts and things like that, so...
Add that to the personnel policy then?
Mm-hmm, I think it'll be a good idea.
I'm fine with this.
Separate policy.
Personal manual.
Or you can make a reference to the Facebook policy.
Works for me.
Okay.
Just approve the policy as it is.
Okay.
So, we need action on this, or...
Yeah, I mean, just approve the policy as it is.
I move that we approve the social media policy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Changes to the employee handbook.
All right. There's section 15 dash 6, long-term disability insurance. That needs to be removed from the personal manual, so we never had it in, so I don't know, since I've been here, so... Just cleaning up that policy.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
I move that we remove the long-term disabilities portion in the personnel handbook.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're down to the city. Move, move up here, David, if you don't mind.
All two.
Approval of city-county cooperative project agreement. Do we wanna do the high school first, or...
That's fine.
Yeah, we'll do the high school, High School Road.
Sure. So, last time we were up here, I think, was two or three weeks ago. We, you know, we presented a sheet that kind of laid out, you know, what we were thinking that the plan was for the entirety of the joint project sales taxes, and so that, you know, that total's 11 million. And so, one of the categories under there was the supporting economic development. And so, part of that discussion between the folks at the city and, you know, the presentation that we made to you all was to spend some of that money on the new road that would connect between Mission Drive and Creek Trail Drive. And so, essentially, what you have, I believe that you all, we had sent it up, I'm assuming that you all have a copy, is the agreement that actually would kind of put that in place. And so, it's, the language in the agreement is very much like we've done with agreements in the past. It's almost identical. I know that Eric, I think Jill, had some comments back and forth with our attorney that wanted to add a sentence or something about the timing of it all. But in any case, the long and the short of it is that the city would be undertaking the process to work with the school district and their engineers in order to design and construct the road and take care of all the administration of that process. And then ultimately, the cost of the project, we're limiting that to $1.5 million with the suggestion that the city carry half of that at $750, and the county take the other half. And so, really, the long, that's really what the agreement says. It basically assigns the responsibilities and then talks about the costs. And so, the school district, I think their intention is to have folks in the new school building in August of 2019, and so we're assuming that the road would be finished just prior to that.
So, it's very similar to the Myrtle...
Right, it would, it would-
Hollis Agreement.
Right, it was almost exactly the same process as that. So, they would, they would essentially be responsible for getting the road built, and we would reimburse them at the end.
So, where did we come up with the one and a half million, and do we have a final design on the road, and do we know what the road's gonna cost?
Right, we had done an estimate at the city of what that road would cost us, and so that number came out of our estimating of what that road would cost based on, you know, some linear footages of similar roads and some rough estimating in that fashion. We haven't, the final design, I think, is, is being ironed out as we speak, and so, you know, the exact amount of grading and otherwise that would need to be done is still a little bit uncertain, but I think that's getting ironed out. But generally speaking, from the estimates that the city did, we would assume that the road would cost approximately 1.5. And the other costs that are, you know, are the other things that are in there, certainly the school district is, is donating the right-of-way for that road, which would equate to about three acres of property. When we, we built Mission Drive and the Roundabout, the cost of that property that we had to purchase for the Roundabout was $30,000 an acre. And ultimately, so that would be, you know, a value to both the city and the county of about $90,000 if that number were to be still true today. So, all in all, between that and then the engineering that's going to go into the road, which is really just being wrapped up inside the engineering that's happening for the site plan of the school, there's also some value there. And so, typically, that's about, we would look at that as being about 10% of the project cost, and so, you know, that value is also included in that 1.5 million.
So, when you guys were here the last time, we had talked about, obviously, Mission Drive, being able to, to take a whole lot more traffic than Creek Trail and the intersection of Creek Trail and Edgewood.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, do we have some assurances from the school district that they're gonna try to do everything they can to dump a lot of their traffic onto a major road versus creating more problems on Creek Trail and Edgewood in the future?
Right, the, the engineers had presented to the city what they believed to be their final layout for the, the road and for the, the site plan at the time. I don't think that they had presented that information to the school district, and so we didn't, we didn't widely spread that information. And so, I think that process is, is happening or will happen soon, and ultimately, I believe it's the school district's intention to have a conditional use permit submitted to the city on the 13th of November, which would then also include the actual drawings of the site layout, which would include the road. And so, we're very near having that information become public. And so, the way that they have the, the, the plan laid out as we saw it, they are utilizing one of the empty legs of the Roundabout would be this new road connection, and the other leg of the Roundabout would tie into their parking lot system. And so, just because, you know, that tie-in with the system, it would make sense that folks would probably choose to use Mission Drive.
Yeah, Kerry Gamper had called me, and he said, I guess they made their, their initial presentation last night to the school board. So, he said, once, once they get past that, then he can bring us drawings and give us more information, too.
Sure.
He said, he just couldn't do that until the school board approves it and accepts it.
My only concern is just that, you know, we're signing an agreement on really something that we don't have final drawings on. We don't really have, you know, something that's, that's concrete that we can see, have the scope. I mean, obviously, some of those things can change, and I don't really care if the alignment changes or whatever, but, you know, just, just something that the school district, you know, obviously, once, once we approve this, then, then it's kinda in your guys' court to make sure that all this stuff gets done, and so, I just wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page and that we're all working towards the same goals, and obviously, Mission Drive is a huge corridor that can take a lot of traffic, and Creek Trail is not, so...
Right, and part of the, part of the issue, you know, when we developed Mission Drive and worked with MoDOT to receive funding to get that interchange built, you know, part of that agreement was that we would have connections into the existing system that would feed into that interchange. And so, you know, that was when we began to develop kind of the master plan drawing that we presented to you all last time. It, you know, kind of showed a connection going back off to the west and tying into Rock Ridge and the Frog Hollow area, and then also showing, you know, connections into Rolling Hills, and then also this road that would tie down, you know, to Stadium and Edgewood. And so, you know, it's part of, you know, of the larger plan and fulfillment, you know, kind of fulfilling those requirements that we had, you know, told MoDOT that we would, you know, accomplish at some point as the development happened. And so, you know, it's, it is kind of part of that continuation of that plan and that commitment.
So, in the, in- So, in the contract here, it says that our contribution not due prior to January of nineteen. So, will that just be one lump payment as a reimbursable or?
Right, we would assume that it would be, that it would be just a lump sum at the end. So, once the roadway is completed, then we would make, the city would, you all would pay us and then we would turn around and pay the school district.
So Larry, your amount would not need to be incurred until nineteen? And it's not currently in your deed.
Right.
And it states that in the contract.
Jeff, I thought you had some concerns about using all this economic development money as far as, you know, it doesn't leave a whole lot left in that line item as far as new emerging economic development projects that may come about in the next several years. And we're basically out of money in that with the Helius and the high school.
No, the Helius stuff came out of that, right?
Yeah, the money, the five hundred thousand came out of that same line item in that, in that sales tax.
Sales tax out, not G.
No, it was from G.
That was this?
Correct.
This round?
Yes.
So, that's two fifty. And then MSP right now, we haven't approved that or anything, but we've got a million kind of penciled in for that, right? For our portion.
That's our portion, yeah.
Correct.
So, then you got, this here would be seven fifty. That'd be using up every bit of what we have for the economic development and community partnerships. So, and we're still in the, what, first year?
First year, yeah.
Correct.
My concern is what happens when we have something else come up and we don't have anything? Is that how much we're wanting to put towards that road? Or do we want to save some back behind for other possible projects, community partnerships, economic development? There's nothing saying that the one million for MSP will actually come to fruition. I mean, we hope it does.
I think that's scheduled for nineteen, or twenty twenty-one.
That's in this cycle though.
Right, I mean, it's, you know, that's a number that we've, you know, that we've kind of put there for that. You know, the timing of that, you know, I think, as you all have discussed and we discussed last time, is a little bit nebulous. And we've kind of put it in at twenty twenty-one simply because it kind of fit into our cash flow process at that year. It wouldn't necessarily have to fall in that year. It could move, you know, it could slide to the very end. And I think a lot of that's driven by, you know, the developments, pressure in, you know, will there be a developer who comes along who wants to do something? And so, you know, the timing of that, you know, we're a little uncertain. Certainly, we haven't actually, we're still working with OA, as far as I understand, to actually acquire the property and what restrictions are going to be on it. We really don't know the answers to those questions just yet. So, in some ways, it's moving quickly, but still, there's a lot of hurdles to cross before we really know what's going to happen there.
Yeah, that's the government way, isn't it?
Well, you know, I don't want to go through too quick.
I agree, and that's one of the conditions. I think you're going to have to have a developer come work for MSP to, you know, give us some kind of a scope and a plan to go with. And maybe it doesn't happen by twenty twenty-one and that frees up a million dollars, which happened the last tax round. We had that in there for MSP and we ended up doing the Lafayette interchange, so.
Right.
I mean, that could happen again, but I'm just, I'm concerned because it uses up every bit that you all have for this partnership and cooperative agreement, so.
Right, I mean, the other, yes, it does sort of take all the money that's in that category. You know, I think, you know, last time when we were here, we talked about, you know, the improved roadway safety category. We still had eight hundred thousand dollars there that wasn't necessarily assigned to anything. You know, how, you know, how we would want to assign that money in the future, I think, is, you know, is certainly up for decision. You know, could that also be used for some type of economic development? Perhaps it could as well, but that would be a decision that you all could make and the city council folks.
They didn't have the road in on the price tag when it went on the ballot, JC didn't? Or was that?
I would have to defer to them.
That road's been shown in the city-county thoroughfare plan for at least the last fifteen years, well, for the school district, David bought the property. So, as the city and county went through the Creek Trail Drive, Frog Hollow, design and redesign, the location of that roadway was shifted from what was the, through the middle of the site. And then whenever the hospital bought the property and wanted to create a campus with, you know, basically road on one side and then their development on the other side, that shifted that roadway over to the east side of the property. And, you know, that's how it's gotten in there. But that road's been shown in the thoroughfare plan for ever since Mission Drive was first envisioned, back fifteen years ago.
Yeah, we've got a lot of roads that have been on there for a while. I'm not saying it's a bad project at all, I just didn't know if any of that went into the, was on the ballot issue or the wording, if any of it was going to pay for the road or how they went about that. It sounds like they're running into more costs just with moving the.
Moving the land.
It's a very challenging site.
I mean, the one thing I do like is that we're going to do, it's fifty percent, but then there's a not-to-exceed amount on there. And then, are we going to make one payment? Is that what you all were saying about that?
Correct.
In January of nineteen.
In January nineteen. And we will have money in there at that point for this?
That was my question to Larry earlier. It's not in their eighteen budget, but it will hopefully be in the nineteen budget.
But this five point five million is over five years. We don't get all this money.
No.
On January first seventeen, so three to five years is when we're going to get the money. So, when will it be available?
And Eric's budget that he's turned in, we're starting to save money back. You'll see the various items from year to year. You know, we'll save funds back. And I know this is on Eric's radar to make sure we have sufficient funds. You know, he worked with Jill, you know, doing the agreement changes on it. So, that's our intention, is have it available when needed.
But if they all fall at the same time, then we don't have the money.
Well, you can't pay what.
You know, that's the case. It's the same thing the city has to do. You have cash flow issues. You know, we may have delayed one project from, you know, starting maybe first of two thousand and nineteen to make sure we have sufficient funds, you know, available. It's something that we do, we've done for, ever since sales taxes have been around. You know, we've had to shift projects, you know, around as far as start times to make sure we've collected the funds prior to actually giving them the go-ahead to go.
Right, I mean, I think the, as far as, you know, what we're looking at, you know, of course, we've had the Helius project already taken place and they've begun to ask for that money. So, pretty soon, we'll be asking you all for that. But, you know, the only other project that we have slated for next year, you know, hopefully, would be the sidewalk project and curb and gutter project over on East High, which we're going to talk about next, I think. And so, then this is the only other project that we have in the hopper that's ready to go. And so, you know, in some ways, some of this is going to be kind of backloaded into the backend of the sales tax, so.
As long as it happens that way. Doesn't always go as planned. I mean, we got the Dunkin' Street corridor, you got the Clark, that interchange. And if all of a sudden somebody wants to do something because it fits in to do it right now at this time, then if you got this other money already spoken for, I understand, you can put it off or you have to put it off. You can't get your red Corvette because you don't have money, so.
Damn.
Okay, that is just, that is some of my concerns.
Sure.
I am still concerned about being out of economic development money and community partnership money, so. When the city councilman comes up, say, we got a great project coming up, we used it all up.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if they're okay with it, and as long as they understand that, I'm fine with it. I don't know if we just want to, I'd like to talk to some of them too and make sure that that's where they're at with it. Because you all haven't approved it yet either, have you?
No, it's, the intention is for it to appear at the council meeting this coming Monday. And so, then they would read it for the first time on Monday and then potentially approve it then the following Monday, which would be the twenty-something-ish of November.
Where'd that one point five million number come from? Is that just one day?
Well, we had looked at the, you know, basically, the length of the road and compared that to, yeah. So, the city is, has estimated that that's what the road would cost.
I've heard us to be a little bit more than that, but.
Well, right, I mean, it's.
But that's all we're committed to.
That's all we're committing to. You know, it's, we're sort of, you know, making that offer to the school district and they can, I think we're saying, this is what we can give you. If you would like it, you can, you know, but then anything above that would be on them.
So, we got to prove it pending city council approval and we can.
And I don't know, Jill, was there any language that you had discussed with Ryan that needed to be?
We put it, we, actually, we made it like the Helius agreement where it's made clear that the school district is the administrator of the project, but the city is going to enter into a development agreement.
Right.
With the school district and our contribution is limited to X.
Okay.
And just basically like the Helius.
Okay.
I just, I have concerns like Jeff does about using all that economic development money. And, you know, obviously, you know, if you had to push a project back, I would think Clark Avenue would be the one that would just get pushed off. I mean, it's the last one on the list and, you know, it's probably work that needs to be done there, but it may have to wait until the next cycle. And, I mean, obviously, we can juggle some of that money around, but anyway. So, you guys wanted to approve this today or you wanted to wait or?
We got to prove it, like I said, pending.
Sam, we just approve it and then they would approve it.
Okay.
Yeah, because if they don't approve it, it comes to moot anyway.
Yeah.
But what about your concerns on how the road layout is and stuff and where it pushes traffic to?
Well, I think David talked about that a little bit. I mean, and hopefully, we can communicate some of that and hopefully, we can stay in the loop too. So, I mean, obviously, it's a city street, you know. More your guys' responsibility, but I just don't want you coming back here in a year and saying, well, we got a traffic problem at Creek Trail and Edgewood and we got to spend some money there. So.
Right, and certainly, at some point in the future, you know, probably maybe the next sales tax cycle, you know, we did a traffic study when we were redoing, reconnecting Frog Hollow and Creek Trail. We did that traffic study. You know, that study indicated that, well, sometime in the future, we're probably, in order to make that all work, there would probably be a roundabout at Stadium and Edgewood, a roundabout at Creek Trail and Edgewood, and then a roundabout at Stone Ridge and Creek Trail, or, I'm sorry, and Edgewood. So, you know, a series of three roundabouts. And so, that study has taken into account, you know, the school traffic and then, of course, the future development inside the quarry and et cetera, et cetera. And so, you know, so, yeah, we are aware that sometime in the future, that that, that there will be work that's going to be necessary at Creek Trail and Edgewood.
Exactly, that's why we did the study. You know, right now, the city made some changes at Stadium and West Edgewood, you know, that has helped traffic flow through there. But as the study showed, at some point, yes, there is going to have to be additional work. Now, whether it's Stadium and West Edgewood first or if it turns out to be Creek Trail or, you know, down there.
Stone Ridge.
Stone Ridge. You know, that'll be dictated by the traffic, so.
So, the study took into account the Stone Ridge build-out, but did it take into account that the new high school was going there too?
Right, it did.
We did, I don't know that we saw that, but.
No, I think, maybe Kerry can bring in. I think maybe, part of the thing, we should get together more often so we do know what's going on. I think we kind of got, you know, blindsided a little bit by Castle Avenue, so that's made us a little gun-shod.
Right, and that's kind of why we're, you know, trying to, you know, get out ahead of these just a little bit more than certainly we did on that. We kind of came in at the last moment.
We need to work, we need to work better together. Like that.
I'm okay with approving this if, I mean, I just, you know, I see your concerns, Jeff, and I'm concerned about that too, but, you know, I mean, obviously, all these were kind of just listed. And, you know, if another great project comes up, I think Clark Avenue gets pushed off and we, you know, we have to do what we got to do.
Same thing we've done in the past, you know, Wildwood Extension's been in there probably at least last two sales taxes. It's been pushed off because other projects came in, you know, whether, depending on, you know, nobody has that crystal ball. But, you know, that's where, you know, the leadership would have to sit down and say, which do we value more? You know, this new development or one of these projects that were included on the deal?
I'm fine with it too. It's a great project with the school going in there. It's a good time to do it. We're not doing it before developers are coming in to do something. So, I don't have a problem with that. It's one, reiterate that we've got a budget and that's what we're working in.
Sure.
We don't, I know you don't want to hear it speak, so that's just where I was going with it. Just make sure that we're, we've got the money in there by two thousand and nineteen too, because that's only two years of the money and stuff. But, I mean, High Street's fallen off the radar a couple of times too. Part of it was because it cost more and part of it was we had other projects that came up before, so it does happen, so. I'm good with it, so. We beat him up enough.
He's not bleeding yet.
I'm going to start sliding out of my chair, you know, that's.
All right, so I move that we sign the agreement with the City of Jefferson for the high school road, Mission Drive to Creek Trail project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Discussion of city-county cooperative.
This is not the final.
Project agreement for East High Street improvements.
All right, so this is kind of along the same lines. Again, the language of this one is the same, essentially, as I had it, but Jill probably is going to change that a little bit. But in some ways, this is a kind of a little bit more of a classical representation of the agreement since we don't have, you know, we're not agreeing. It's not Helius or school district one, it's actually just a city-county project. Again, so it sets out the goals of, the responsibility being aligned with the city. Essentially, we'd be looking at doing the engineering. In fact, we're doing the engineering on it presently with the intention of being able to construct this thing next year. And so, so ultimately, that's kind of what sets out there in the item number one. Item number two, again, is the same language, basically, assigning some responsibilities to the different parties. The financial part of that, again, if we go back to our sheet that we, I talked about a couple of weeks ago, you know, we're looking, you know, in the category of maintenance improvement of existing infrastructure. And so, that category had four point six million dollars in it as, you know, combined city-county money. And so, we're looking at this project at being somewhere in the neighborhood of one point seven. Again, that's just an estimate that we, you know, came up with based on, you know, our experience with that type of project, the retaining walls that are involved, you know, and some replacement of some of the existing stormwater infrastructure under the street. And so, again, so that's really setting that out and how those, the way it's worded on the agreement, you know, is again, that would be a fifty-fifty split between the city and the county. And again, the rest of the agreement is the same. And so, again, it's just really setting out the timeframe, the who's responsible and the dollar amount.
And sidewalks, there's no new lighting or?
No, there's no, you know, our intention is, of course, if you drive through there. No, there's no, you know, our intention is, of course, if you drive through there, part of the challenge is going to be a blending of ADA requirements and existing electrical poles. You know, right now, almost exclusively on both sides of the road, there's electrical poles and they're right smack in the middle of the sidewalk. And so, trying to create a situation where we can meet ADA and, and get that all squeezed in there is going to, you know, that's really where the issue is with the project. I mean, otherwise, it's relatively straightforward. And there aren't, there's no intention of any fancy lighting or anything like that. It's basically going to be a ADA-compliant sidewalk, new curbs, and some improvements to the stormwater infrastructure that's underneath the street.
I've had some citizens ask, too, right there by East School, you've got that, and, we, we drive that way when we come into work in the morning. And it never fails, you'll have somebody pull out of, is that Riverside?
Correct.
Right. And so they said, "Are you going to lower that?"
No, it's not really our intention, although the, there is the school pedestrian crosswalk there.
Yeah.
And so then, that's probably not in the best spot because it is just slightly over the top of the hill. So part of the project might be looking at doing some sort of rearrangement there to try to get that crosswalk to be a little bit more visible, particularly as you're coming from the east, going west. And yes, Riverside Drive is sort of a, you know, it's a skewed intersection, so if people are going east, you know, they probably tend not to stop as well as they otherwise might because they can just sort of blend themselves around the corner. I don't know that we'll be able to change any of that. It's, it's not really our intention to try to change that necessarily.
Yeah. That was, people asked me and I said, "I didn't know," so I thought I'd ask you.
Right. Okay, I, it's, we really didn't consider doing that with this project.
When is this going out to bid?
It would be our hope to have it somewhere ready for construction in early summer of 18.
Okay. So can we do the bids and then when we get the bids back, then we can put an amount in there? And, because this is kind of an open amount. Estimated cost 1.7, well, next thing you know, it could be 3.7. We do have plenty of money in the maintenance improvements of the existing infrastructure. We've got 2.3 million, but is there any reason why we couldn't wait until we have the bids back and see where they come up and...
Well, I think from our standpoint, we didn't want to be in the same position that we were in on Capitol, where you guys were, you know, we were kind of coming to you at the very end and saying, "Hey, this is a project that we've come up with." I think we were trying to, I think we were...
It was like 400,000.
You know, I think we were trying to...
And then it was 1.4 million.
Right, I think we were trying to get you all involved from the beginning, you know, so that, you know, that we wouldn't get in that position a second time.
But if this comes up at twice as much as what we're estimating comes up to 3.4 million, then there may be a whole lot of changes that have to be done before I'd agree to be a part of it. It's like the Capitol Avenue, I mean, that's, why don't they ask for the same thing on High Street, you know? Why did they get down Capitol Avenue? We can't get stamped concrete and sidewalks and pretty stuff.
Well, um...
All these big words I'm using.
Yeah, pretty, yeah, see how we're affecting you? That's all that, all that aesthetically pleasing stuff.
Yeah, that one looks nice.
The, I mean, in some ways, you know, having an agreement with a dollar amount in it, you know, probably is more likely to make us try to hit that number. And there's, the problem with, there's a lot of old stuff. You know, East High Street is old. You know, I think there's several different things that could happen to try to help control that number if people were willing to make the decisions to do so. Some things like, "Well, there are some existing walls along that street that are not falling down." Well, maybe, even though it's not very pretty, maybe you leave them. You know, that particular homeowner might not be very happy that, that his neighbor got a new wall and he didn't, but, you know, that would be a way of making that project less expensive. You know, is there the possibility of taking some of the parking off the street? And by taking the parking off the street, could you make the street narrower so that the retaining walls don't have to be as tall? You know, there are ways of making that project cheaper, but there's probably going to be people who aren't happy. So, you know, I think we have, you know, I think we have some options there to, to try to make it stay within that, that budget number. But then again, you have, you know, it's, it's an interesting balance at that point of people believing that they've been somehow short-changed when their neighbor, you know...
Well, you're not doing new lighting, you're not stamping the concrete. I, I think you're going to find more in the infrastructure once you get into it, because what, is it Grant Street that caved in? I mean, it's, that's not that far from where we're talking. And I've, I've got a feeling we're going to find some issues.
Right. It's...
Jeff, as far as the suggestion, would it, you know, if we put in 1.7 as a target, anything above that would have to be brought back to you all for, you know, approval. We're going to be in design and have a pretty good feeling where we're going to end at. You know, before it goes out for bid, we could say, if it comes in at 2 million and you all say no, then, you know, they would have to go back and look at, you know, whether or not we want to go forward with it or do some of these changes like David just...
I'm fine with that. That's kind of exactly where I'm going with it. I mean, if my boys come to me and they need baseball cleats, I don't hand them my wallet. I give them 80 bucks and go, "You better go find something that's going to work." So, if I give them my wallet, then, Lord knows, they're having some bling on them.
I just...
Which a little bling's okay once a while.
I'd like this project moved forward if, you know, if we modified the agreement a little bit to where we put it at 1.7 and any additional funds would have to be pre-approved, you know?
See, I don't think we had that on Capitol Avenue. We just said, "Okay, we were going to split this 50-50," and that was the estimated cost was, I think, 900,000 or something. And it comes back, have more to do, a few more nicer things in that corridor, which is leading up to the Capitol, understand all that. But we were going with what our budget said on the cooperative agreement and we're kind of stuck with that. So, we've got a little more money to play with on this one than that.
Right, and I'm also, you know, it may come in, in their preliminary design, we find that, you know, we've got some, you know, stormwater that is, you know, beyond repair, that it may add additional cost to it, you know, that we can come back to you all and to, well, probably the city councils, saying, hey...
And I guess what got it backed up towards that right now was there was a lot more infrastructure stuff that had to be...
Yeah, when they originally looked at it, they were going to reduce sewer and everything.
Right, right.
And that was, that was...
Economical, yeah, it's like $4 million.
What they're proposing now, you know, that, that area needs some attention, you know, to move it forward, you know, if we could, you know, change the wording a little bit, you know, to put anything above 1.7 million, I think's what we had in the, you know, original layout, where we could at least move this forward to keep the project going. It'd be my suggestion if that's your all's concerns.
How comfortable are you with the 1.7?
Well, I mean, I think we can, we can make that number work. Again, we're, you know, you tear into an old house, you never know exactly what you're going to get, but, you know, I think we can make that number work. It's just maybe not everyone is as, as happy as they might otherwise be.
Right.
But if we want to put some wiggle room in there today, I mean, we could do it today and say if it's going to exceed a certain amount, if it's going to exceed 2 million, then come to us and make changes or we have to approve. Or is the one, because if you're going to come to us anyway, if you're sure it's going to be one, over 1.7 million, then this number really means nothing. So, we can put a little, build a little bit of...
You know, like his analogy, when you remodel, you, you never know what you're going to find underneath. And as they go through the design, some of this information will come forward, you know, they'll be mapping, you know, the stormwaters, make sure, you know, if they're going to be affected if there's some change, you know, they'll be able to give you a lot firmer number.
Right, as you move, as you move through it and determine the details, you know, then you can come up with a much better number.
But you're sure it's not going to be 3 million?
If it starts becoming 3 million, we don't have money to pay for it.
It'll become a moot point on city side, too.
Well, we should have done this one first, because I would have said, "Well, then J.C. can't have as much," because the High Street one is one that's done.
Well, I mean, so...
It's been here for...
Right, I mean, we talked about it before and, I mean, I guess the good thing about it is that, you know, we are, you know, we're working on it on year two of a five-year cycle, so, you know, it's, you know, it's not getting pushed to the end. So, you know, if, you know, if we, if we begin to see that the number is going to be more than what we think it's going to be...
You just scare me when you shrug your shoulders at 3 million.
The, you know, certainly then, something else could get scaled back or something else could get delayed. It's not, if you, if that's, you know, the project, how you want to...
To stand up for Dave, and we're the same way, we're going to hedge our, our estimates because we don't want to come back, you know, that's why to get up here and say, "Yeah, it's going to be 1.7," without, without uncovering some of this and getting in there and knowing, you know, it's, it's not...
All right, if you want to use 1.7 as a magic number, then I was going to throw a little more in there for you, maybe, but...
It doesn't make, if you would like to, that's fine.
I would just throw a 1.7 out there as a starting point, Jeff. You know, if you want to say 1.7 plus 10% contingency, you know, we can go with that.
We just go with 1.7 and go with that to start with. I honestly, I don't know why we can't just get a bid and see, you know, once you get the design part, then go, "Well, I came up to 1.7 now, that's all we need." Or if we look at the design and you find some stuff in there, then we can go, "Well, we're going to need 2.4."
I guess from our standpoint, we would like to have some sort of agreement that says that we're going to work on this project cooperatively. If that agreement needs to exist without a dollar amount associated with it, you know, perhaps that's okay. You know, it's just that we are, you know, that the dollar amount will be determined...
I'm back to the 1.7.
Why don't, why don't we just put 1.7 in and then just see what comes? But don't do anything crazy like narrowing streets. You mentioned that. They, you know, you've got a beer truck and a, and a fire truck that meet on High Street, one of them's going to lose. And there you've got parking on both sides of the road.
And they're not one way.
And we...
They're not one way.
I don't know which one's going to put out the fire, the beer truck?
Well, I'll just say, that narrowing streets, there's, there's so much traffic on that with, especially with parking on both sides.
Take the bicycle lane out of there, then you've got plenty of room.
That's on Capitol.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought that was the skinniest car lane for a while, and then I see a bicycle pictured on there, like, "Oh, that's supposed to be driving here." Didn't hit any squirrels, almost hit a bicycle. There you go.
I think we all want to see High Street get done. I mean, that's a high priority of all of us and, you know, we just, we'd like to see more of the, the plans, what it all entails, what, what's the scope of the project, you know, what are we going to try to do for 1.7 million?
Right.
And obviously, we, we want to be a partner with you on it and, I mean, just, just from our standpoint, I mean, whatever that cost is, I mean, I don't mind if it's 50% or something, but, I mean, we just, you know, for ease of, of our standpoint, we'd just like to cut you a check for whatever half is and, anyway.
Otherwise, they're trying to hold your feet to the fire like they do Eric and I.
Now you know what it's like at budget time.
So would there be, you know, any set time? I mean, would you like, you know, we could certainly keep you involved, you know, every couple of months we come up. Of course, if we're trying to bid this thing in, in May, you know, every couple of months is only like twice, you know, or what sort of schedule would you all like us to come up and give you updates?
I'm good with emails.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just if you got enough data and say it's okay.
Probably before you, I'm sorry, Jeff, just before you bid the project, I mean, before the project plans go out, you know, just so we could take a look at them and just see what...
I would suggest probably a intermediate one because, you know...
Somewhere in the neighborhood, like what we call our 50% plans, you kind of basically have the, the layout of what it's going to be and what it's going to entail, and then you're just kind of working on all the little details after that. So that's kind of, you know, might be a reasonable time to come up and show you, "Hey, this is what we're doing."
That'd be my suggestion. That way you can see, you know, if there's something that, you know, you're going to have enough detail, you'll be able to see if there's something there you don't particularly care for, you know, like with Capitol Avenue, that we can get that out in front, you know, it gives the city a chance to, you know, is this something that we really want to do, you know, type of deal, or do we want to cut it back? So I would suggest at 50% mark is, is go from there and let you all take a look at the plans as well as the cost estimate at that point.
That'd be great.
So we can reword this and basically says that we'll, it'll be equally split with the cost not to exceed 1.7 million. So we have a top number.
I can work with Eric and Ryan and David and we can work out something.
Okay.
Or how you want to, is that good?
Well, I mean, yeah, and I think, I mean, if we could make you two payments or whatever, you know, over the course of the time, rather than you guys billing us every month, I mean, I think it'd just be easier for, for you all and for us to say, "Okay, it's 1.7, we're going to give you 400,000 here and then we're going to give you the other 450," you know, at some point there. Obviously, you know, if you guys don't do the project or it doesn't get complete, boy, problems down the road.
Right, certainly we wouldn't need the money if we didn't get it constructed.
Well, I know the, the monthly billing becomes a headache for everyone, so, you know, we have to try and go through it and then we forward it on up to Debbie and then Debbie forwards it on. It just, it'd be easier if we could do it in, in one or two lump payments like that, just saying, "Yeah, we'll give this and maybe the last one we keep just, you know, if it's, comes in last one, then we can adjust at that point before we make final payment." So...
That work?
Yeah, I, I, that would be, that would be fine. I mean, I think the, the one thing that, you know, if, at some point in time in the, at the end of the sales tax, you know, there'll probably be a point where the city has spent X dollars and the county has spent some other amount that might potentially be less. And so, you know, that last project, there might be some, you know, just accounting to try to, you know, make up the difference so that everyone meets their commitments.
It don't have to be 50-50.
Right.
I mean, whatever's left over, too, you can take and transfer to your road safety brokers, like the street overlays and stuff, because Lord knows, y'all got family streets that need old legs.
We probably could find a couple.
Yeah, or stormwater for that matter.
Well, and that's basically what we've done just about every sales tax that we've had the cooperative money in. We've adjusted kind of in that last project, you know, we bring up the, the county showing, this is what the city paid here and here, this is what the county, you know, we're going to make this 70-30, you know, just so it comes out the same money.
Our red Corvette and I can go check out the roads for you.
Well, you can check out the smoothness, I would just have to think, so...
We can just ride with the...
Yeah, she's got a red Corvette.
Larry was suggesting it'd probably be easier on a bike, he could really feel the bumps.
We can get you a bike, you know.
And some coveralls.
They make an electric one.
Sammy Lunchbox, remember Larry Lunchbox?
Okay, so are we going to get this reworded and then we'll approve it or do we want to...
It'll be your preference.
I think we need to reword it so that you have exactly what you have in mind in front of you.
But I think that you're taking away from, we're in for half of the 1.7 and then if it comes up more, then we can address it, then.
So, I mean, would we, because I do have these on the council agenda, would we be able to have that language, you think, by next week so that, so we can prove it and so that we could just send that in as a substitute to the...
You got it done today or what?
Yeah, we're getting it done in the next 15 minutes. Estimated cost 1.7 million will be equally split between the city and county not to exceed each entity up to $850,000. So, there you go. Go change some wording. We're done, we can do it today. All right. Basically, take the wording that you had for the school, put it in this one. Do you have this where you can change it?
Yeah.
Let's do it, let's get it done.
Not right here. Not on my computer. And I also need to coordinate with Ryan on it and get his approval.
Well, we send it to him if they need any changes, they can send it back to us. They have it today then because you, when, the next time we're going to meet, it's next Tuesday, y'all are meeting Monday.
Right, I mean, so...
You wanted this before then, right?
If it could happen, that's fine, if it can't, then we would just offer a substitute bill at the next council.
David, it, it'll be done, I mean, it's, it's no, no.
It's right, right.
We're just talking a few sentences.
Right.
We're talking another meeting to approve it, and to sign it, though, and we're not having another meeting till Tuesday, right? And that's after their meeting.
Right.
Which he's trying to get this before then.
If you guys could approve it, and then we could approve it, right?
Right, if you guys were to approve it next week, then we would just take the language and use, and put in a substitute bill for our council, and so they could approve it on the same schedule as they otherwise would've, if you would've, you know, either if you approved it today or next Tuesday, it doesn't make any difference as far as the council's concerned.
If I have this, I can change it right here, we can have this done right now, I would've thought this could be changed in 10 seconds.
Let me see if I can email it to you.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we can take care of it right now, we don't have to bring it back up. 'Cause I printed the damn thing out, oops, there's another dollar.
Does that go into the project account?
I'm just trying. Okay, I guess if we can't get it done right away, then it can't get done, it seemed like it was easier than that.
Yes, I.
All right, move on.
Okay. So I think we're done with.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
No, we're not done with it.
Thank you, Dave.
Well, we have to come back and do it.
Thursday or Friday, don't you have a sidewalk sale or something you can't get away from?
No. We can do it Thursday when we're over here doing our insurance thing, is it Thursday?
You have, you have two of y'all here Thursday? At the time I looked, I don't have a meeting scheduled for Thursday either. Man, it's too late to get on the agenda now.
David, run.
Change these words.
I'll let you all get that little bit of it figured out.
Hang around for me, I can change.
Thanks, David.
I need a drink, I'll just stand up for a minute.
Am I, am I credentialed there, there's some?
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Our final SURF 4% annual election for the 2018 year.
Yep, this is, again, an election we do every year, but currently, the 4% in the county-wide budget is costing about $386,000 for the 4%, as the old timers retire, it will cost you more, because anybody hired after 2002, you'll pay 4% on. So, that's just, I'm pretty sure it's probably in the budget already for next year, it was in the budget for this year. You only pay the 4% on full-time employees, there was a request last year from the, to pay 4% on part-timers, we, we didn't elect to do that, that would cost you about $14,000 a year. So I would ask you to approve the annual election to keep it at 4% for 2018. Unless you have any questions.
For full-time only.
Full-time only.
Yeah.
I'm good with keeping it the same. You got any? You good with that? So I move that we keep the SURF annual contribution at 4% for full-time employees only.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So do we have any other issues to come before the commission this day?
Yes, I have still something open from the last time, which was when we talked about the health insurance, and since we do start open enrollment tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, we talked about maybe an incentive for employees to take the HSA. Currently, we have 77 employees taking the HSA, it's a little bit more than the 18% that I had said before, it's around 20%, which is good. I know we threw around $500 at that cost, assuming everybody, you'd be up to another 40, uh, $39,000 worth of additional cost to the budget. At this point, I'm suggesting we just leave it as is. With, actually, the amount going, it's like $93.12 for the current HSA. The employees would do the math, it, well, more likely it would be beneficial for them to go to the HSA. A lot of employees don't wanna pay that money upfront right away, with the claim that may or may not happen, so, definitely their choice. And we do have some that really don't have a choice, they are not eligible for an HSA, so. I just wanted to bring it up, because we talked about it before.
I just don't keep it the same at this point.
I think so.
Okay. It's okay with you, Jeff? I don't really need any actions, just we're keeping it the same, so. That's all I have.
Anything else?
Go through some emails, try and catch up some other house cleaning stuff, Wade.
Okay.
I thought there was some stuff on here, but. I guess Jerry left, 'cause we had some questions about some timesheet stuff and things, too. So if we don't come to the mandatory meeting for the insurance angle, it stays the same as it was last year?
We're switching companies, so it can't stay the same, we have to fill out new forms for the new company.
Where's my forms?
I'll, I'll have them tomorrow.
Am I watching a baseball game or something?
We would encourage all the employees to come, because believe it or not, they'll learn something new every year, we can take care of you guys if you don't have time.
So you're encouraging us to come, but it's not mandatory?
They're gonna have to fill out the form one way or another.
Okay, so as long as I fill out the form.
I would hope that you would help me get the people to come to this meeting, 'cause we have, we have close to 350 employees that don't really want them, each one of them trancing through.
So they gotta come here?
No.
One at Public Works and one at E M S.
Yes, yes.
We're what, Thursday, 9:30?
Did you not look at the schedule?
9:30, are we 9:30 Thursday? Tomorrow?
Oh, yeah, it's a guy here on Debbie's side, did you look at that?
Another, another one of your emails you sent him, I had to hit delete on.
There, no, it's still here, there's three attachments, if I look at one, it's like a smiley face and a bunch of numbers.
People need to learn their benefits.
I'm already on the HSA, I'm not gonna change anything, so.
Well, your benefits change.
What do you want them to work?
Well, you gotta sign up for the dental and, uh, vision and.
Yeah, but I could fill the form out without being here.
You have to be here to listen to the benefits. Could change, might be better, you might wanna add something to it, this is your only time, once a year to change anything.
Yeah, I'm sure it's gonna be a lot better. The health insurance, I'm gonna be getting it a little while, I thought we was taking care of that, but.
Hey, you need to set an example for the employees.
Can I count this as my mandatory meeting? I didn't know when this is, if we're gonna have all three of us here, it's gotta be on the agenda. How do I know when they're gonna be here?
Is it, what, 9:30, 10:30 here?
First one tomorrow?
Here.
It's just informative, it's not a commission meeting.
9:30.
It's a coffee.
You can come to Row Bridge at 7:30 in the morning if you want.
So 2,000 insurance meeting flyer.
And all the guys really do a good job, they show up, and law enforcement, they show up.
Commission?
Which one of the attachments has the? Oh, here it is. It was hidden in the middle of everything. 9:30 to 10:30 here?
Yes.
In the middle of the day, that runs all day.
You can come to Public Works at 7:30 in the morning.
Do it like at 6:30, 'cause 7:30 you need to be at work.
Oh, goodness.
Are we getting that contract yet? I was trying to stall, so we got that contract ready for the end of the day. Well, I just handwrote it in like three different words, and then we had it all done. All right, let me check these other emails, I was kinda stalling, too, lost track. You gotta sign up for Mac Conference, right?
Yes.
Thanks. Software bids, and we're gonna do that in, you're gonna do a couple of, um. No, a couple of Reader's Digest versions.
Jennifer's gonna talk to them about.
You get the full-press thing, like four-hour presentation for each one.
Larry's having refresh ones, too, right?
Okay, so we're gonna do that in, they're gonna do like a Reader's Digest version, right?
That's on the 19th and 20th. Can you hear me? That's on the 19th and 20th.
It was closed, it was streamlined, well, it's a streamlined, but we did the bid, bids were received from some, you know, the two companies. No dollar bid.
I was gonna say, she sent an email that said.
But we have the documentation over there.
So you're gonna have a discussion before we have the presentation, and we're excited to take care of, not going in there with you. There are arguments for.
I think it's gonna be very difficult.
Well, it wasn't any easier the first time. And it wasn't any easier the last five years, was it? Maybe it's gonna be more difficult than that.
Well, I think a lot of that depends on.
You were the only one that was here the last time that that happened.
Oh, yeah, we got promised there was gonna be a bridge, and there was rainbows and unicorns. It's been nothing but that, it's been kind of a pain, it's actually been pretty quiet the last few months, so, y'all just basically been saying it is what it is, and can't always change a whole lot, or has it still been a pain?
The hope of something different is.
Cost to quiet.
I've been praying for you, Larry.
I'm gonna go as far as I can get.
See you in Mac. All right, well, obviously that works out, then. Crossroads we're waiting on.
I think personally, Chris and I need to sit down and talk about how we want to present this.
Can't outlaw.
Get Jeff to sit in with us.
Is that what, Jeff's sitting out there, he's your bodyguard?
I don't know, I thought I had a whole bunch of other stuff, too, that we, we had done, but.
It's been quiet.
So, that's all I really got, do you have anything, Chris, or? Do you wanna talk about the part-time, or the sheets and stuff, or what, what do you wanna do with that, we got the emails?
No, I just wanted you guys to be aware of it, I said something a couple of different times, and things can progressively get changing, so I thought it was time for me to say it, and now so you know what was going on, so. Questions I can, or pardon that, if you're, 'cause I'm sure he'll have a reason for it.
Yeah, 'cause I, we understood that part-time was gonna increase, but the overtime was gonna decrease, as much as they was money, so, kinda wanna see where we were at with that, if it's still in the process, I know we've got some part-timers who are getting ready that they're not working, so.
I've had lots of coming, leaving, so it could be a reason why, just so it doesn't. And the amount of hours overtime was, should or shouldn't work based on rules for the health insurance.
Yeah, what you emailed in that part, too, the boxes for that, 'cause that was, that's something definitely we need to watch.
All right. And we got a couple of pay forms here, for some part-time people, and, that I really don't understand. Basically, it's some paramedics, and, anyway, I just need some explanation there, and then some people going from part-time to full-time, and I don't understand where their, why their rates are changing, I thought that part-time people were getting paid the same as full-time people, did we change something there?
I have to get that grid back out, I'm, you know, I don't think we've changed that.
I thought we did.
Unless they're going from part-time. There's still a change in the 12 and a 24 until the 24th go away.
We was trying to encourage some people who work some part-time shifts, so let's give them something, right, but we weren't having to pay benefits, so it actually.
Right, the rate from a part-temper to a full-temper should be the same, unless they're going from a part-time to a 24 or something.
So that was a dollar 25?
But it should've been less, not more.
Right, less.
Right. Give them any when we're done, I just need to look at that, so. Okay, anything else? I maybe stand recess till 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No closed sessions.